To water. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
For the fire, United States of America, the people of public, which is saints, one nation, under God, and with the soul, with liberty, and justice.
Roll call, please.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demers. Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Devona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Karina Noid.
Here.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Rachel Ryan.
Here. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Is the mic on? Oh, very good. Sorry, you didn't see it. Good evening. Richard Rosansky, 35, Reynolds Street. At the last town council meeting, a resolution was made to refinance the town's existing debt through a $15 million bond issuance. I'd like to remind the town council of another potential bond issuance, that of the Waterbury Watertown water and sewer lawsuit. In July of 2023, the court awarded a settlement of $18.8 million to Waterbury from Watertown. As you know, Watertown appealed to judgment, and that appeal is slowly making its way through the court system. The city of Waterbury has asked for an extension of their brief until September 18th, and the appeal will most likely go before a judge in early 2025. We do not know who will win on appeal, but it's in our best interest to prepare financially for the worst outcome. Since Watertown continues to pay Waterbury the 2018 water and sewer rates, we have accumulated an additional $6.47 million in unpaid balance in interest for a total of $25.3 million as of July 31st. By January of 2025, the amount owed Waterbury will exceed $28 million. In October of last year, the Water and Sewer Authority raised water rates by 30% and sewer rates by 35%. The WSA stated that the intent of the increase was to, quote, "put additional money away for a worst-case scenario if Watertown were to lose," end quote. The WSA never stated how much additional revenue these increases would create, nor how much of that increase would be set aside in reserve for the lawsuit. On two occasions, I've asked the finance department for this information to no avail. The town manager told me he would provide this information to me in lieu of the finance department, but that has not happened yet. At the May 2024 Fire District Public Hearing, the Fire District stated that they owed, at that time, approximately $8 million towards their arrears, and that they had put aside $1 million towards that, and that their proposed 25% increase in Fire District sewer rates would add an additional $280,000 per year revenue, with $200,000 of that to be used for Waterbury arrears. I believe the public needs to know how much money is held in reserve in our water and sewer accounts in case we lose the lawsuit, and how much money is being added to that balance quarterly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
Catherine Camera, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. Under new business, letter B on your agenda, it appears that the new VAC truck will cost the taxpayers an unexpected, unplanned, approximate $269,000. Where is this new vehicle going to be stored? The town garage has a wooden roof and no sprinkler system, leaving all the expensive town vehicles parked there vulnerable. I will once again remind you of the council's 2015 resolution for a new town garage. We cannot afford to lose more vehicles, and the current garage is a hazard. On another note, I was recently told that the senior center needs bottled water and civic organizations are trying to help with donations. I thought there was a water fountain in the center. But regardless of the reason for the necessity, since 80% of plastic water bottles end up in landfills, and it takes a few hundred years for just one plastic water bottle to decompose, I would say that in addition, that the water is wasted when only a partial amount is consumed from a bottle. So that's a lot of waste happening in our senior center. I think the director should ask for donations of Brita filter pitchers and biodegradable cups, and I hope that the members of the council would see my point and encourage that as well. And I'd be happy to donate both. I have a few questions that maybe someone would add to new business so the public could get answers. Someone is responsible for that $63,000 grant that went by the wayside, and I would hope that this council is going to find out who, and that they're going to be dismissed. We, the taxpayers, can't afford something like that, and there was plenty of time to get that grant in. It's disgraceful, and somebody is accountable for that. And you, as the council, as our representation, need to find out who, why, and deal with it. And I also want to know, why did we hire the assistant finance director before hiring the finance director? So why is Susan Zappone staying on, we're paying her to train the assistant, rather than having had her train a director who would then work with an assistant? This is really bizarre to me. Is Susan Zappone going to stay on to train the director too? So how long are we going to continue to have our finance, former finance director staying on to train people? It just doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't have hired the finance director first, get that person trained while in training, be looking for the assistant. So I do think it feels like we're going to learn that our new assistant was really hired for the director position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment? We have motion for the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting dated August 19th, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. We have one abstention. I have nothing under chairman's report. I don't believe we have any subcommittee reports tonight. Town manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the town council. Just an update. The finance director position interviews have been scheduled for the week of September 9th. CLA, Clifton Larson Allen is the accounting firm that is doing the review for our finance department. They've concluded all the staff interviews, and we, as I stated last meeting, that we expect them to conclude within eight weeks of those interviews. The chief of police will be, has requested to come in front of the council, which we will schedule for the next town council meeting, to discuss the issues within communications, and I'll leave further detail for him to report next meeting. And regarding grants, I'd like to address the recent news that the town of Watertown missed a state grant opportunity for upgrading transportation services at the senior center. Throughout my tenure as town manager, I have been highly proactive in pursuing both state and federal grants. I'm proud to share that Watertown and Oakville have secured over $17 million in state and federal grants, which are currently being utilized to enhance our infrastructure, improve the quality of life for our residents, and increase parking and safety along our main street corridors. This has been accomplished over the past three and a half years, and that does not include the $6.5 million that we received from ARPA. While we remain committed to actively seeking local and federal grants, it is indeed disappointing that we missed the deadline for the ARPA reallocation grant for senior transportation. I share the frustration and concern of those who have recently learned about the issue. It is important to note that the state changed the deadline. Watertown did not miss the deadline. The state changed the deadline, which caused confusion for staff. Additionally, the recent hiring of a new park and recreation director, along with his transition into the role, the assessment of the actual needs in line with the grant requirements, and the daily demands of the department contributed to the application not being submitted on time. Although I accept full responsibility for this, I want to assure everyone that we will be vigilant in pursuing the next round of grants for senior transportation. I have been in touch with Eric Purcell, our senator, and Joe Paletta, our representative, and they assured me that there may be funds that are left over because of the date change. We are prepared to apply for that grant. To insist that we fire somebody for missing a grant deadline is absurd to me. That's enough said about that. We, staff has worked very hard to go after this money. That's $17 million and three and a half. I've been a resident for 37 years. I cannot remember ever Watertown securing those amounts of monies. On further note, the Westbury Room, we put out, as far as blight is concerned, we meet monthly as a team regarding blight in Watertown. I would say that our enforcement of blight has been weak, and we've been strengthening our resolve to enforce our blight. When blight gets to the level of the town manager's office, it usually is at a point where a person cannot afford to pay for the repairs or cleanup, and we work to try and help people do that. It's very difficult to look at somebody who's lived in town for so long and tell them we're going to fine them $100 per day for a blight issue. We are strengthening our ability to make people make changes, but I cannot imagine that we're going to put somebody out of their house for blight. The Westbury Room, there is an active water course underneath the Westbury Room. The town of Watertown has no ability to change that water course without state approval. It's in the state right of way. We are working with the state, and we are working with the owner. The owner, the building is dilapidated. It is dangerous. I've been there. I've looked at it. I'm concerned about it. We forced the owner to put fencing around it at this point. I've demanded that he give us a letter of anticipation on correction actions, and this is left at the state for them to change the water course. I've had complaints that we should burn the building, we should knock it down, and we can do that. But what happens to the debris? We don't know what's inside the building once it gets into our water course. We are within weeks, if not months, to have this rectified, but the town is taking this seriously. We're working on it. We just can't move any faster. If you have any questions on the Westbury Room, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's it for my manager's report.
Thank you. New business, item A.
I move to appoint Andrew Lampert, 542 Henman Road, Watertown, to be appointed as an alternate member of the Conservation Inland Wetlands Agency for a term to expire January 2025. Mr. Lampert will fill the unexpired term of Mr. George Trupan, who has resigned.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Douglas Anstil, 188 Honey Hill Road, Watertown, to be appointed as an alternate member of the Conservation Inland Wetlands Agency for the term to expire January 2026. Mr. Anstil will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ed Norton, who has been appointed a regular member.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both votes are unanimous. Item B.
I move to consider authorizing the purchase of a VAC truck utilizing the bid from Sourcewell for a total amount of $624,818.5. Authorization includes utilizing $80,000 from fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the VAC truck lease scheduled payment for the truck destroyed by fire as a down payment, along with the insurance proceeds in the amount of $276,032.49 as approved at town meeting.
Second.
Anyone have any further questions? Okay. Try it.
I'll just speak louder.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we're not, Jonathan, you're not moving to consider authorizing. You're moving to authorize it. I know it's written that way, but I want to just be clear that we're.
We're authorized.
We want to authorize it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $10,438.47 to the police overtime account, funds received through a homeland security program.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund's contingency account in the amount of $8,000 for the purchase of a parcel of property from the state of Connecticut located at Route 262 and Echo Lake Road. I further move to authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents associated with the purchase of the property on behalf of the town council.
Second.
This is a piece of land where we're going to do, what do we call it, honoring the various town organizations?
Yes, Centennial Park, which will be honoring our volunteer organizations and the Watertown Foundation.
It's been mentioned that maybe we should name it something other than park, because people are getting the impression that it's much larger than it is, but we can discuss that down the road when we name it.
Agreed, yes.
Anyone have any questions? Yes.
I believe work has already started there. Is that correct, Clarine?
There was work started initially when we went after this project. The town was under the impression that we owned the whole parcel, minus the setbacks for the state of Connecticut. Once we started working in that area, we were notified by the state that they actually owned about a quarter of an acre of that lot. So we were put on notice. We stopped developing that, and we're just waiting to secure this so that we can continue to develop, and hopefully this will be done in 2025.
Thank you. That answers my question.
I think it's worth mentioning that the state wanted a lot more than this to begin with.
That's correct. The state wanted $16,000 for this piece of property. It was of the town's opinion that it was probably worth $2,000. There was several months of going back and forth with the state, and at the point of $8,500, including fees, we felt that that was the lowest the state would go, and I think it's a legacy project that would be good for all our volunteers in Watertown.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Or say, the motion passes unanimously.
I move to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement for tax incentives with Forum Plastics LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Yes, here.
No, the only question or comment I have is that the, on the form, it has the old town address on there, 424 Main Street.
Thank you. Another council member pointed that out. We'll change that and correct that. I do have Mr. Johnson here, our new economic development coordinator. If you have questions, he could probably give you more information if you'd like.
Anyone have any other questions?
Yes, my mic's not working, so I guess I'll talk loud. Stuff that happens inside the building, do we know, is that taxable? So the machinery that they're going to put in it, does that come to the town, or does that go to the state?
Do you want me to answer that, or do you feel comfortable answering that?
Sure.
I can answer. Is the microphone on?
Yeah.
Some of the stuff, most of it is not taxable to the state because of the manufacturing rules, but most of it, most of it is not taxable, but there will be some of their personal property that the town will receive funds from.
Above and beyond of the monies that we saw here?
Yes, in the proposed agreement, outside of just the land and the building itself.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Yes.
I may not be, I may not be remembering this correctly, but I do remember that we had talked about the no tax on the land for the two years while they would be building the building, but I did not remember the four years where there would be the reduction in tax between 2026 and 2029. Is that, is that, would that be production on the tax on the land or tax on the building? And I'm just wondering, how is this going to advantage Watertown if we're giving them that many years of tax reductions?
Ma'am, so for the first two years, the tax on the land, only one and two, what that is designed to do is to help them as they build the building. So right now, the tax, for the most part, would be on the land, one year, one and year two. Their expected build time is 18 to 24 months, so that's where that will fall along. And then so, what you're looking at is that entire seven-year period. So one, two, land only, then years from three, year three to seven, in that timeframe. To answer your question, the abatement would be 80, 60, 40, 20, and that would be on the land and the building altogether. So what you're looking at, max, probably depending on your timeline of actually being able to construct the manufacturing building, it would probably be about a window of six months, give or take, where that land, where there may be a building there where they're getting taxed on just the land, but it should be for a very short window.
It might be helpful to know that as vacant land, the tax is $31,847.90 projected after seven years, $1,115,529.
Madam Chairwoman, if I can answer, just add a little extra there. The benefit to Watertown is that we're investing in our future. We've, we won this company, we were in competition with Doggettuck and Oxford over this company deciding where to actually build their facility. It's an 80,000-square-foot building that will be up within two years, and within those seven years, we'll be collecting full tax dollars on that real estate. Additionally, it's not a perfect lot. It has the CLMP high-tension wires that run through there, which lends credibility to the town to enter into this tax incentive to entice people to purchase that property. As a result of this discussion, it's been put out there on the market, and we've been approached by another company that would like to build an 80,000-square-foot on a piece of property that's adjacent to it. So I think the benefit is more than twofold by taking this action.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a follow-up question, and this is based on the presentation. The presentation that Goman and York did in June, where they had recommended that a study of the financials of a company be done before offering tax abatement. I looked at the form that we, that would have been filled out, and it did require three years of financial statements, including state and federal tax returns. Is that how we looked at that?
No.
Jeremy, I don't remember what forms we did receive from there, but we did a financial analysis. I don't know if you're prepared to talk on that.
So actual numbers, I don't have in front of me to give you the actual numbers, but we did do analysis on what the cost would be for them to come here, and we did do a one, I think, believe it was a one-year look back for their profit and loss, but more so, we were considering what the cost would be and how we can help minimize that cost in the beginning for them to construct the building, and then add to the grant list with very little fiscal impact to the town.
Thank you. How long have they been in business?
At least 10 or more years. I don't know how, exactly how long, but at least 10 or more years. Credit A rated tenant, so that means you will rank that with companies such as like a Starbucks or a Burger King, meaning that whether they were to stay there or not, they will continue to be paying. So very strong in regards to their credit rating in the facility. And if you were to go to their facility now, which is in Waterbury, very clean, pristine, because they make the medical moldings for, moldings for medical devices. So it is a very good company, environmentally friendly, as well as they are already trying to actively help and join the community as well, so.
Thank you. Would it, would it be possible to look back the full three years?
I don't think we need to do that, no.
I think we're beyond that at this point. I mean, I think it is the topography of the property being in line with the CLMP wires. To be honest with you, I don't always agree with Joe McGrail and Joe Secris, but we went back and forth, and this passed the smell test for them. They were on board and thought this was the best move for Watertown based on the type of property that we're trying to market. This property's been on the market for.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, and we've been collecting $4,000. I'm, I don't remember the numbers, but.
It's about five, yeah, between four and five thousand.
About $4,000 or $5,000 enough on empty property. The first year alone, we're going to get an increase. I'm sorry, this third year in, we're going to get an increase. To me, I think this is a good move for Watertown to take.
And this is really, it's about the business, but it's also about, it's mainly about the building being built. That building's going to be there, hopefully, for a very, very long time, and we are going to be collecting property tax revenue on that building, regardless of the tenant, for many, many years to come. I think this is a great idea, and I think we should encourage this for new construction in town.
I would agree. I just had one other question related to this, is do we know why they decided they wanted to leave Waterbury, and what was kind of the decision for them to decide on Watertown?
So one, space, Waterbury's business park, they didn't have the space for them to build new, and so their lease was running up, and so they knew it was time for them to expand and make a building that was more in tune and specific to what they are actually building themselves. And then Watertown fit the smell test for them in regard to proximity of their workers as well. We were competing with other towns, not only with taxes in regards to tax incentives, but also being able to make sure that their workforce would still be able to get to the location. So we're working as well with CT Transit, trying to make sure that the bus that does run up there will hopefully be able to run up closer towards where Forum Plastics is too. But to answer your question, we, I believe, the one of differentiating things is that they needed space to build a building that was specific to what their product is.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Another one?
I apologize. Just one last question. Was there any look into the history of their current site as far as environmental impact? The thought of plastics, you know, as you said, you toured the inside of the building, and it was pristine. I'm curious, you know, outside the building, the potential for plastics, chemicals leaching into the soil, the water.
From my untrained eye, as I'm not an environmental analyst, my untrained eye, it looked okay to me, but I am not qualified to say on the outside if, yes, they were environmentally to code, but I would say, looking at their business, again, on the inside, and I would assume, say it's safe to assume that they are on the up and up, or on the upside of being environmentally friendly and clean as well on the upside.
I have a couple more questions. I'm just wondering, did we offer the same plans as other towns that were also interested in this facility, or did we sweeten the deal in any particular way that got them to come to Watertown?
The same for, for a couple of the towns.
Okay, same deal, a couple of the towns?
Yes, yes.
We're offering the same.
Not, not all of the towns, but for a couple of the towns, yes.
Okay. And this, this total in this tax incentive proposed analysis, when we first got it, I was just having a hard time understanding it. I know Jonathan probably can explain it better, but I'm just, this, this total number, the, you know, 1.1 million dollars, and then the, you know, 3,400% net increase, if somebody could explain. hundred percent net increase, if somebody could explain that to me, I would appreciate that.
I don't, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but in essence, that total, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I think I'm pretty close to. But in short, what that is showing is the net increase from what the total amount is, what you would get over seven years versus the total amount which you would get seven years with just it being vacant versus a piece of land being on it. That's what that net percent increase is on there. And so that one point, one million dollars is just showing, and actually it's a conservative number saying that the tax mill rate would be static. Probably not likely that the tax mill rate would be static for seven years. So that's actually a conservative number on what the town would probably receive in regards to income or revenue from that building. But what you're seeing is just a difference in percentage from what you would receive over a seven-year period if it was vacant as is versus having an actual improvement on the site, on the parcel.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I guess what would have been helpful data to have would be what is the company saving over the time period, and also, yeah, to compare that to, you know, basically this number, and also what might have been other scenarios that we could have offered them that might have been a little bit more beneficial to the town versus the, the company. So, I mean, this is like a really nice number, but I don't know who is winning in this equation. I mean, one of the things, I've done some research and read about this, that tax incentives oftentimes don't necessarily benefit the towns, and they end up losing money. So it's just hard to say, like, you see this number, and this looks great, it's well over a million dollars, but, you know, what, what are they getting that, that is potentially at our expense? I just don't have that information.
There's more data, but that, what you have there is to be succinct and try to be efficient for your packet.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
For your packet, but what the town is getting, I, I think that is a surefire win in regards to dollars and cents.
Yeah, no doubt, it's a good amount of money.
If, if you're talking fiscal impact, I mean, the new business coming, as Council Member DeBona already mentioned, you have a new facility going up in the business park where the average age of the businesses in the business park are about fifty years or more in age. So you're going to have a brand-new facility coming to an aging area, as well as the business coming to Watertown is going to have very little impact, fiscal impact on the town. And what I mean by that in specific, we're talking in compared to housing, when you bring a home into, into a new town, they're generally going to cost more because you're bringing on a family and what they would be using in regards to services. They're not going to be asking much for services outside of policing, fire, as well as they are taking on the cost of extending the utilities out to their facility as well. So from a fiscal impact, I, it's hard to find many cons, and, and I toyed with it a lot, not just myself, the EDC, I want to make it speak as, make it seem as if I'm speaking for myself, but, and it's very hard to come up any cons into having a building that's been, or a lot, parcel has been vacant for ten years in comparison to a brand-new facility in Watertown at that, in an aging area, that you're going to generate over one point, one million dollars in less than ten years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To the chair, just to answer one of your questions, my quick math said that the company's saving a little over seven hundred thousand dollars over those seven years.
Okay, thank you.
And just one follow-up question, on the, as far as the, that percentage of reduction in taxes, the eighty, sixty, forty, twenty, zero, that's a scale that we've used in the past with other tax incentives, if I recall. So that's where, that's coming from. I believe there's a policy we put in place.
This is a policy of the council, the additional pieces where the two-year static tax rate while they build. And just to add a little more context, just may, I don't know if this could ease the way, I, I think it's hard to qualify this as a winner or as a loser. I think we're, it's a win-win situation for us. It's a, it's a win for the company because they can take care of some of their costs to build a building. It's a win for Watertown because we have another piece of vacant land that's going to be occupied, that's going to develop over time and produce tax dollars. Doggettuck was going in at a hundred percent tax over four, five, six years, and they said they would be willing to sweeten that deal to draw them down into, Doggettuck and Oxford was very similar, I think it was eighty for five years. We, through the insight of economic development, through that two-year static cost, or, I'm sorry, the word's escaping me at the moment, that static mill rate and.
Value.
Value, thank you very much, was EDC's idea to, to win this deal, and, you know, that's a lot of experience between Mr. McGrail and Mr. Seacrest in giving their way behind this.
I, I have to add that during the course of the negotiations, I know how hard Mark and Jeremy were working on this to make it happen, and I think, rather than criticizing it, anyone out in the public or anywhere should be giving us kudos for how we were able to lure this company away from the other two towns that were working very diligently to get them. We have to do that, and if we don't, we aren't going to, we're, we're really going to be in trouble tax-wise in the coming years. We have to build. We're, we have a few pieces of vacant land, and this land with the ramifications that people would turn away from it because of the power lines made it even more difficult to find a company to, to take it. So I, I think we have a, a double win from my perspective. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed, but I'd like to just qualify my opposition. I am very much in favor of the tax revenue, we need it. My one concern is according to our own tax incentive program policy, the environmental track record of the company needs to be considered, and that concerns, health and safety concerns me more than revenue. I would like to approve this with, with more information to that.
Motion passes. Move on.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation of two thousand dollars for tax refunds.
We have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, tax appeal with Global Steering versus Town Watertown, and pending claim related to public participation. The attendance will be the town council members present, the town manager, and town attorney, Paul Jessel.
We have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Recording stopped.